... meeting of Lawrence County. Please rise for the Pledge and Legions. Joe, would you lead us in the process of that?
Pledge and Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a brief moment of silence.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I meant to mention this before the moment of silence, I hope we would all keep in our thoughts and prayers the family of Judge Cox. His father passed away about a week or so ago, so thank you.
Absolutely. He was a good man. All right. Carol, please call the room.
Commissioner Spillwell?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Boyd?
Here. On the docket, first and foremost today, as always, we have row officer. We're interested in comments. I'm seeing it's like two row officers out in the audience with us today. That's Treasurer Rapone and reporter Calagena.
And personally, I think it's appalling. And I'd like to read just one of the lines. He said that invoking the Sunshine Act has essentially become a convenient way for people with disputes against local government to attempt to strike fear in the hearts of the public of the nation in the act. And I don't have a dispute with the county. I simply believe, and I think I've copied all of you on the statutes appropriate, that the public should have the right to see the minutes before you approve them. I'm going to ask that the solicitor's memorandum be entered for the record. And I'd also like to be entered for the record the letter that I sent to the county commissioners which cites all the statutes. There's also lots of case law that could be cited, and that would be my next step, I suppose. But again, I believe that we should be able to see the minutes before they approve. If the public makes a comment and at the next meeting, the minutes don't accurately reflect the public statements, then I don't have the opportunity to question why the statement was misstated or misquoted. This has happened a lot in my community. That's why this is a big issue for me. We've even had times when we've submitted a public statement that was read aloud. Next month, we find the meeting minutes completely inaccurately cited, you know, what the statements were about. We asked them to correct it. It appeared that they were being diligently corrected, and we found out months later that they were not. So again, this is the third time I'm asking a public. Should I give this to the secretary or who?
Well, first of all, thank you for your comments. Your requests are still under consideration. In terms of the for the record element of it, what exactly? We don't keep a file of things that people hand us to hand out with the minutes when we hand it out, do we?
I just attach them to the agendas and the filings.
Gotcha. Thank you.
They should be available for public record if someone asks for the meeting minutes for this meeting?
I don't think that's the case.
That is public record.
I, we will look into that.
Okay. Again, who should I give these to then?
I think you'd have to hand them to Carol, that'd be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone else? All right. Moving forward to fiscal and contractual. We have no advertising for bid proposals, no receipt of bid proposals, no fiscal reports, no report on quotes of the warrant register. We have some time to review that, and I'll take a motion to accept the warrant register.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second Commissioner Spillwell's motion.
All right. You're going to motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Up next, minutes in correspondence, approval of Tuesday, January 21, 2020, meeting minutes. Give a minute to review, and then I'll take a motion for approval.
I will move for approval of the minutes.
And I will second.
All right. We have motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Presentation of written correspondence. We have received two pieces of correspondence. The first, from Elwood City, February 16, 2020, giving Act 14 notification or an Act 15 notification for plan approval, application to install three new natural gas-fired furnaces for their box furnace project. And correspondence received from Co-Engineering, dated January 16, 2020, giving Act 14 notification for a general permit, DEP GP5, utility line steam crossing for water line work to be done in Perry Township. Give a minute to review those, and I'll take a motion to accept and file the correspondence.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to accept, noting that it appears that the letter relative to the Elwood group is, I'm going to assume, specific to their site here in the city of Newcastle, since the correspondence came from their office on 700 Moravia Street. Carol and I had a little discussion as to not sure which of their facilities, whether it was perhaps in Elwood City or up here in Newcastle. But I'll make the assumption that this is the one here in the city, since that's where the letter comes from. I will move for acceptance of the two documents.
And I will second.
All right. You're going to motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Up next, we have Commissioner's comments, staff reports. Anyone out there on the staff looking to report? Jeff, I think you're coming up a little later for your.
Yeah, I'll need another report.
Yeah, I'll make sure. Yeah. All right. We'll move on to Commissioner reports and comments. Today, we'll start with Commissioner Spillwell.
Okay. Very good. I said last week it was a busy two weeks. I'll say that this is week number three, that it has been just as busy, meeting with the different. We had our first, yes, Richard and Jen, our first department head, row officer meeting. And from the feedback we're getting, it was very well received, and I think that was good. And of course, Jeff as well here. So we certainly will be continuing them and continuing to move forward and do the job of the county. Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Along the same lines, I think it's worth noting that my two colleagues yesterday attended the Southwest Pennsylvania Commission meeting, along with our planning director, I believe, Amy McKinney was there as well. So we were very well, very well represented in Pittsburgh by the two commissioners. And then on February 7, which is a week from Friday already, I will be attending the Northwest Planning Commission up in Oil City. Also, just looking ahead for planning purposes, if I'm not mistaken, the courthouse will be closed on February 10 in honor of President's Day. Would that be correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. The only thing I'll say, and it kind of touches on what you said, but Loretta and I had the opportunity to head down to the first meeting of the Southwest Planning Pennsylvania Commission, which is an extraordinary agency. It's comprised of the 10 county region in southwestern Pennsylvania, the city of Pittsburgh, and agencies from across the Commonwealth of New York City, meet and interact with several of our counterparts all across southwestern Pennsylvania. It was interesting. The way the meeting was set up, there was about 15 different meetings, because there's about 20 different boards that we had to structure. And so when I say we had probably 10 meetings in two minutes officially, with minutes and everything, that was quite an experience. But I'm glad that we went. I'm glad that we had that opportunity to represent Lawrence County on the regional stage.
Yes.
I also want to say, and we'll save on this for later, but we have a budget after about three weeks of rewrites that we will later in the meeting. And that's all I have. But on the new business, first up, under the Commissioner's section, Department of Public Safety, Jeff Perry, with five different. Jeff spoke very highly of you yesterday at our staff meeting. We're very excited to have you onboard.
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Now, the first one is the agreement with MCM Consulting Group, which is for our hazard mitigation plan that we discussed, I think, several meetings ago, to move forward with the grant that we received from Pima on the 54,200. So that is the, to proceed with the planning of it. I know they've already been in contact with the office to try to get some ahead. We have a meeting, actually a kickoff meeting, I think, on the 5th. So Pima's okay with getting stuff started even before contracts are in place, the money's there, but just to do some preliminary things before everything is signed with the, we haven't done anything with MCM. We've done stuff with Pima just to get, so once we contact them, we'll be paid ahead of the year. So that's the thing.
This is, I believe this is provided through, this hazard mitigation plan is pretty much entirely provided through grant funding.
It is. Yeah, it's all grant funding. We have a 15 or 5% share, I think it was, on the grant agreement that we sent out a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
That is all made up, or the county share is made up by wages. So the planning department, they, my wages as later on in the, I see my first fight on EMPG funding, so we can't get grant funding under grants. So what we do, the planning department takes care of it. So all their wages, the county share is actually in kind with their wages, so we're not out in on that.
And will this be paid out in a one-month term, or is this going to be stretched over that 14-month period?
This will be stretched out over the 14th month, depending on the progress. It's probably not going to take 14 months, due to this just a renewal. We've already done it. We selected MCM again. It's a professional service. They have, they did our last one. We do them every five years. So they're quite familiar with what we have. So all we have to do is just, you know, redo our.
It's really funded through grant or through in-kind wage matches. I have no issue voting on it today. Any of you?
I'd be fine with that.
All right. Carol, what's the resolution?
Twenty-one.
Okay. Okay. The next two sort of go hand, even though they're sufferer, if that makes sense. All of it is, it's no financial obligation or anything. This is adding Butler County onto our ICORS, which is our inter-county regional radio system, that there are seven counties involved with it. Right now, Butler's going to be the eighth. And with our governing body and everything that we have with ICORS, everybody, we had to do the same thing several years ago. All the other counties are going to their commissioners to approve Butler County to come into it. The financial gains, we won't see for a while with an eighth person, with an eighth county in it. It'll take a few years for it, because of course, like what we did whenever we negotiated a contract with them, you know, it's cost neutral per se for several years just to make it more inviting to join. But after so many years, then, you know, we'll see a little reduction. But that's why we joined with everybody that we couldn't afford at all by ourselves. So there are two sufferer contracts that we have with Motorola, SUA 2, which is every two years we replace the equipment, which actually we're starting to do, or we're going to start to do that next year, I'm sorry, next month. In March, we have to start it. So it's just, we're approving them as a board to become ICORS members.
Any questions?
No, sir.
We'll move for that to be Resolution 22.
And there's two of those. There's two sufferer contracts or Resolution 23.
Yes.
They like all their papers on the.
Absolutely.
Certainly.
Absolutely.
The Act 147?
Okay. The Act 147 is what we call RURF, which is a Radiation Emergency Response Fund. We are eligible for that grant. We give it every year due to the Beaver Valley Power Station. We are a reception, we're a support county for Beaver County if anything happened at the plant. There are several counties that surround Beaver that are outside the 10-mile EPC, which is Emergency Protection Zone if something did happen in the plant. We're one of, there's Butler, Lawrence, Washington, Allegheny that surround Beaver. We're four counties on the western side of the state that get the, the other counties out east by the other limerick power station, and as they get to funding through whatever county, so as long as the power station is up and operating, we're eligible for a grant. It doesn't get any more than that, doesn't get any less than that. If it ever got any less than that, the power plant probably shut down. If it ever did, then that grant would go away. So it's like anything else, we spend it, we get it back. It's the same amount of money that we've done for the past couple of years. So again, we spend it and get it back. And this money can only be used for radiological detecting devices, training, stuff like that that's involved with it. Which actually, this year, we will be having a federal exercise. It's June 6, 2020. So it's the time again. We do a decon exercise at Mohawk High School, their reception center. Anybody coming and fleeing from Beaver County, if they want to stop, they stop at Mohawk High School. Will be decon. Red Cross sets up an excellent shelter if need be. We do that one night. The other night, then we activate our EOC, and we have federal evaluators come in and spend four or five hours with us. Everybody's doing it at the same time.
Okay. So this is basically just pass through?
Exactly. Yes, sir.
Any questions? Carol?
Yeah.
All right. We'll make that Resolution 24, unless there's any objections. Okay. This one might be the last one today. For me?
Yeah.
No, not for us.
I had another one, but I think we're ready to cut it off. I didn't talk for long today. I was not going to let you forget that.
I was going to compliment you, now I'm not.
Thank you. The last one is the EMPG grant and Divergency Management Performance Grant. What that is, is a reimbursement for my salary and our administrative assistant salary at 50%. They've had so many years to get training after your appointed director or the coordinator, as they call it. So I've been at 50% for the last couple of years. So of course, it's just a reimbursement. We have to do quarterly filings. We file it every quarter, but then we get paid once a year. So all this is, is showing that the money's going to be coming back to the amount of $64,050.
All right. That's probably a pretty easy one to also sign off on at this meeting, unless there's any.
Fine.
Great. We'll make that Resolution 2020-025. All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stick around for the voting. You can take off, you can take off.
Okay. We'll stick around a little while.
Sounds good. Next on the docket, we have a discussion of possible approval of naming Scott Baldwin as the interim mental health and departmental services director. Joe, do you want to give us a little bit of background on that one? I think it's pretty self-explanatory, the need for him.
Absolutely. Certainly, the MHDS office at the current time needs somebody to oversee it as well as sign off on important documentation. Scott, as an individual, was who we're voting on, Scott Baldwin. Scott has been an employee, well, first of all, within the mental health system in Lawrence County for many, many years. He served as the director of the crisis unit for several years. About three years ago, he came to the county. Has a tremendous, you know, deals very well with individuals, both the community and in the office. And I think he's a wise choice to serve as the interim director.
All right. Any questions, Loretta?
Just a comment that I've known Scott for many, many years in my work through the police department, in the different systems, in the crisis situations, with the mental health situations, and just knowing his temperament and knowledge and his skill sets for those different issues. He's definitely, definitely a good choice of a position.
Yes.
I just appreciate your recommendation.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I don't have any issues. My colleagues don't. We'll make this Resolution 2020-025. It's important.
Two-six.
Oh, two-six. Thank you for that. I think it's important that we get that position staffed.
Right.
It's important to have someone full-time at the helm, you're up in the controllers office. You've been doing a phenomenal job balancing the two for that, too.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Chief clerk's office. Here's another big one for today. We have, finally, discussion of possible approval to execute the local union, the 964 court-appointed unit bargaining unit contract, which we've been looking forward to this one for a very long time. Any comments on this from the board? I believe this was settled through pretty much arbitration, right?
Yes.
This was, you know, it worked out between our arbitrators. We were able to come to an arbitrator agreement.
Yes.
And we're looking forward to moving forward on this and setting up this contract and get this behind us.
Yes.
Dan, any comments on that?
Could I ask that when the motion is made eventually, that we add two things, or make, excuse me, one addition and one correction to the proposed resolution? That the union be referred to as laborers local 964?
Okay.
And under item two, that we correct the date.
Oh, yep.
Which I believe would be 2021, if I'm, but I'll need some help on that, if it is in fact 2021. I'm assuming it is. But what's listed there right now is obviously not accurate. I hate to put you on the spot. Would that be 2021 to your knowledge?
He has the originals. It says on.
Oh.
It said the three years, the three-year.
Okay. So it is 2021, 2021.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Loretta, any comments?
Nope.
Glad that they're getting done and getting the resolutions done on them. Yes.
All right. We'll make that, unless my colleagues have any objections, Resolution 027, with the changes that Commissioner Vogler noted. Now's the big one.
All right.
I'll pick, yeah. It's pretty big. We have before us today a resolution fixing our millage for fiscal year 2020. As follows, the mills will be for general purposes, 7.528; for debt purposes, 0.646; and for special purposes, our libraries, 0.135. Bring the total millage at a one-mill increase to 8.309. It's important to note that the prior budget adopted increased the millage 0.588, so this new budget will increase that further 0.412. But I do want to briefly talk about how we came to that figure and the budget completely. So starting on the revenue side, with this document here, which will be now available for display up in our office, we'll put it on the website and make sure anyone from the public has access to it, wants access to it. But in this budget, we pulled out $1 million in unsubstantiated revenue from the revenue side, including $250,000 budgeted for the sale of the house in Wilmington Township that was purchased.
The Shannick Township.
Oh, I'm sorry. The Shannick Township that was purchased for use as a managerial office. The plans for that are still uncertain and very fluid, and we're not sure at this time if we will be selling the house, or for that matter, what the total sale price of the house will be. And so at this time, it would be premature to budget any dollar figures in for that. If we do decide to sell that house, those revenues will come in as unanticipated revenue. Additional unsubstantiated revenue item was $250,000 for the now canceled jail program, where the state sent us inmates and compensated us to the grave of a million, roughly a million dollars, if not exactly a million dollars. But there was still $250,000 on the revenue side from that now canceled program. And the final point was $500,000 in unsubstantiated revenue from projects like Hickory Run Power Plant, from the new water plant in New Beaver Township, and a couple other. New Beaver Borough. I always get, I always screw that one up. New Beaver Borough and other smaller projects throughout the county. Given that we do not have those properties assessed yet, it would be inappropriate at this time to include them in the budget. And again, when those properties do come in, that will be accounted for in additional revenue at that time. We also cut a total dollar figure of $443,749. That was done through meetings with each of our row officers, department heads, and court administration, which fall under the general fund. Through those meetings, we were able to basically skim down on our expenses. It was made very clear in all of those meetings and in the staff meeting yesterday that this will be an extraordinarily tight budget year, that we will all be needing a cutback, and that we will get through it. But, you know, for the time being, we do need to trim back on our expenses. And so we were able to cut $443,749 out of our individual line items in the general fund. The other thing that the budget, the former budget neglected to include was $1.3 million for our retirement fund. And that's an actuary-provided number. We felt that it is crucial to continue funding our employees' retirements. Right now, the fund stands usually around 98 to 102% funded. We want to continue that. If you start not putting money into those retirement funds, that's a slippery slope, and we want to maintain our position at 100% funded. And so with this budget, our retirement is and will continue to be fully funded. Because at the end of the day, the taxpayer's going to pay for that one way or another. It's better to have those investments in place now. It's better to have those investments in place now than have those unfunded liabilities 23 years down the line. That's basically what we have for the budget. Like I said, we've instructed our staff, we've instructed our department heads, we've asked our row officers and the court administration to keep the finances in mind when they send down purchase orders. We will certainly be monitoring purchases very heavily throughout the year. And as you'll see in a couple of future resolutions, we're implementing new cost controls to further get our costs down. But that's effectively the budget and our mill rate. So again, we're raising it one-mill. That will raise an additional $1.4 million of revenue that we needed to make up the balance in our funds. That being said, any comments for my colleagues on that?
Just a procedural one. If I'm not mistaken, what we're doing today is introducing this proposal.
Yes.
And I'll let you talk about the plans after that, but I don't believe our purpose today is to enact anything.
Yes, right.
It's simply for introductory. I'll defer to you to talk about the procedures moving forward.
Yeah, absolutely. So today, what we want to do is, we want to get a resolution on the table and pass to approve the millage, so that way, our treasurer can start making preparations to send out the tax bills. We're legally required to get those out before March 1st, and we also, right now, are operating on, I want to say it's what, four point, what was the total loan amount?
Six.
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 Four point six.
Four point six million dollar loan, taxi anticipation note. We want to get revenue pouring in as soon as possible. And to that end, we're passing this today so our treasurer can make preparations, send out our tax bills, which have to be out by March 1st. So that's on the millage side. On the budget itself, we will be having a special meeting at 8:00 AM on Friday, I think it's February 7th, official budget. There is a mandatory 10-day period after reintroduction of the budget where the public is able to view it. Again, you will be able to view all the changes that we've made, either in hard copy up at the commissioner's office. We'll be uploading this to the website shortly, but you'll be able to view those documents there. And then, the full document itself and the 2020 budget will be voted on February 7th. That's the process. Loretta, any?
Very well spoken. All right.
So without, assuming there's no objection, we'll make this resolution 2020-028. Next up, and again, this falls sort of under the same category, but we're implementing a couple new cost controls in the coming year, the first of which is discussion of possible approval of allowing only for the commissioners to sign purchase orders above $250. Previously, the chief clerk was able to sign off on any expenditure up to $1,000. Our goal, again, knowing that, you know, it was necessary to increase taxes is to control our costs, and this is just another mechanism that we believe will enable us to do that. That's not to say we didn't have full faith and confidence that Joe would be able to execute that duty. We'd just like to keep it closer to heart, especially in this year. So this is a resolution that basically brings down that amount to where any dollar figure over $250 must be signed off on by two of the three of the commissioners. Any comments on that?
Just to note, the process already has in it a good system of checks and balances. Any purchase order before it reaches the commissioner's desk is, they initial the document, then it's reviewed by the chief clerk slash county administrator, and then it comes to the commissioners. Now, that process will continue. What we're simply doing, as the chairman noted, is in the past, anything under 1,000, as was noted, the chief clerk had the authority to sign off on. We're simply lowering that threshold to 250. But I do want to note for the record that purchase orders are looked at by a number of sets of eyes before we ultimately do sign. But I'm certainly supportive of what's being proposed.
Loretta, any comment?
No comment.
All right. We'll make that resolution 2020-029. And the last item, resolution item today, I believe, is discussion of possible approval of implementing a hiring freeze for all full-time employees with exceptions for essential positions as needed. Again, this is another one of those cost control majors. If we're going to increase taxes, we don't want to bring on anyone new. We're going to work with the individuals that we have, we're going to work within this budget to make sure that the county is in a good fiscal position by the end of the year. So to that end, we are implementing a higher and freeze, or potentially implementing a higher and freeze indefinitely. But are there any comments relating to that?
If I may, just a general, first, Dan, thank you for your guidance with everything that we're doing, not messing along. We're new to these processes at a county level. I know Morgan and you were on council previously for New Wilmington.
That wasn't this.
Well, I know.
That wasn't this.
It's, again, sometimes it's hard to believe it's only been three weeks because there's been just so much coming our way, but at the same time, I think we've gotten a lot accomplished. The budget issues, you know, the row officers, the department heads, the courts, everyone has just been so cooperative with everything, trying to help us get through the waters moving forward. And I think that everything is a precautionary measure to keep things so stringent because it's going to be a tough year, and again, you know, it's the responsibility of the commissioners to spend the tax dollars wisely and to be, have a sound working budget. So I just think that that needed to be said, that everybody has compromised in trying to move forward and do the right things to help everybody out, so that it's good for the entire Ford House, I guess I could say. And look forward to moving forward for the next days to continue to work with everyone and accomplish what we... So, thank you.
Thank you.
I couldn't have said it better. Thank you.
Oh, good for me.
All right. We'll make that resolution 2020-030. And with that being said, I will take a motion to move these resolutions into the voting section of the agenda.
I'll move that we amend the agenda for purposes of consideration of resolutions 21 up through and including 30, Mr. Chairman.
And I will second that.
Hearing a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Try to move through these as speedily as possible. But first, on the docket, we have resolution 2020-021, which therefore be resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners. The authorization is given on behalf of Lawrence County Department of Public Safety. All documents related to the MCM Consulting Group proposal provide 14-month contract, MCM, for the services as an independent contractor not to exceed the total amount of $54,200. And again, I'll note this is fully provided for through grant funding. So any motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All right, hearing a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Carol, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spillwinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
I think yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2020-022, now therefore be resolved by the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners. The authorization is given that Butler County shall be a member of ICO RRS as of November 1st, or November 4th, 2019.
I'll make the motion.
And I will second.
Hearing a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Carol, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spillwinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 2020-023, now therefore be resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners. Authorization is given that Butler County shall be a member of ICO RRS as of November 4th, 2019. Will be done, but I guess it's necessary.
There's two separate contract numbers.
There we go.
Yes.
Gotcha. Any motion on that?
I will make that motion.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Carol, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spillwinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 2020-024, now therefore be resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners. Authorization is given to execute on behalf of Lawrence County Department of Public Safety. All documents related to Act 147, radiation emergency response fund application and grant funding for the grant period of July 1, 2020 through July 30, 2021, in the amount of $7,392. Need a motion?
So move.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Carol, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spillwinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 2020-025, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners. Authorization is given to Chairman Morgan Boyd to execute on behalf of the Board of Commissioners Pennsylvania Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement and all related documents. Need a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second with a comment, please. I'd just like to note how much I certainly, and I'm sure my colleagues appreciate your diligence and hard work on all these various documents. You're always on top of them, and I think it's also worth noting, in my time here, in my travels, I've determined that, through conversations and so on, that you're very well thought of in the region amongst your colleagues and even some of our colleagues that have dealt with you. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You pace them all.
I can't now. You cut my budgets out. Thank you, Dan, I appreciate that.
And I certainly reiterate that, absolutely, as much as I joke with Jeff, I think that goes back to the many years that we've worked together, the utmost confidence in you, and I think you know that, all joking aside, so.
Thank you.
All right. Figure I probably should say all that. But, all right, we have a second?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second, Carol, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spillwinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Lawrence, motion carries.
All right, resolution 2020-026. Authorizing Scott Baldwin as the interim mental health developmental services director. Again, concerning the fact that this is the director of an agency, I would classify this as an essential position, and I would note that Mr. Baldwin's salary is substantial, not substantially, but a decent amount less than what Joe was making in his full-time capacity as the director of that agency. But we have full faith and confidence that Scott will perform his task diligently and effectively. But need a motion and a second?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, any discussion? Carol, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spillwinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 2020-027, therefore be it resolved, the authorization is given to execute the local laborers 964 collective bargaining agreement for the court-appointed unit. The local laborers 964 contract shall be three years, commencing retroactive to January 1, 2019, and terminating January 31, 2021.
December 31st.
Oh, sorry about that, December 31st. That's what happens when you go there as fast as humanly possible. Need a motion and a second on that?
So move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, Carol, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spillwinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 2020-028, therefore be it resolved that a tax fee, and is hereby levied on all real property within the county, subject to taxation for county purposes for the fiscal year 2020, tax rate for county purposes shall be as followed. For general purposes, the sum of 7 and 116,000ths, so that's 7.528 mills, on each dollar of assessed value. For debt purposes, 0.646 mills on each dollar of assessed value, and for special purposes, our libraries, 0.135 mills on each dollar of assessed valuation. Bringing the total millage for fiscal year 2020 to 8.309 mills, or a one-year, or a one-mill increase over the former year's budget. Need a motion and a second on that?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I just want to say, voting on this, that it certainly brings, you know, no pleasure to me, and I know it brings no pleasure to any member of this board, to have our 28th vote be a tax increase. Unfortunately, the fiscal condition of the county necessitates it, and even though we are increasing taxes, you know, we will be diligent in the coming year to make sure that our costs are controlled, and I am hopeful that in coming years, we will be able to get that rate down. But yeah, I'm not enthused in the slightest, and honestly disappointed that my 28th vote is going to be for a tax increase. Any more discussion?
No.
All right, Carol, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spillwinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now into our cost control resolutions. Resolution 2020-029, therefore be it resolved that all purchase orders that are over $250 can only be signed by the three commissioners, and I'll note that signatories by two of us authorizes an expenditure, and that all purchase orders that are under $250 can be signed by the chief clerk, deputy chief clerk, or our office manager. Need a motion and a second on that?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Carol, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spillwinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And our final resolution of the day, resolution 2020-030, resolving, be resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners at the beginning, on January 28, 2020, hiring freeze for all full-time employees will be implemented. Exceptions can be determined by the Board of Commissioners, exceptions, those exceptions being for essential positions as needed. So I'll take a motion on that.
Motion.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, any discussion? Carol, please call the roll.
Commissioner Spillwinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have nothing further in the resolutions section in terms of announcements, and I fear you have another meeting, but I'm not aware, please help me out, because I always forget one or two. The next regular commissioners' meeting is scheduled for 10:00 AM on Tuesday, February 4, 2020, in this room. Am I forgetting any meetings?
I think that...
Awesome. Dan always, I, for the past, I think, three meetings, Dan has written me a little note and slid it across the table, reminded that we have a prison board meeting or whatever.
Don't have to do that today.
Yeah, so I think that might be the first one.
That's right.
And then, we're finally getting the chairman thing down. All right, closing out the meeting, are there any further public comments? Mr. or Secretary of District Delcignor?
Yeah, I want to commend you folks for this live feed. Very, very important.
Good.
The citizens of the county do not understand what the commissioners do. And, you know, I fuss about that. I think Dan can verify that we need to get the message out. This is a big plus. Thank you.
And I want to commend Angelo here for volunteering to come out and provide the live feed. Angelo is not doing this for any compensation, he's doing this for the betterment of the community, and we greatly appreciate him taking time out of his, out of his day.
Yes.
And now, for the past, I think, three meetings.
Three meetings since the beginning.
That is, you know, greatly appreciated, and thank you for your service to the public.
And where can you see that on the website?
NCTV 45. It's the community station. If you Google Newcastle, Lawrence County's community television station, you'll see NCTV 45. You can go to Dog Club, YouTube, Facebook, Twitter, any social media.
And again, I will also say thank you for that.
Thank you.
From the very beginning, the first meeting, we happy you were here and volunteering to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think I saw a hand over there from our treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I do have a question. I'm just looking for a procedural clarification on the resolution for the tax rate in the budget. To my understanding, it's being introduced, but will be adopted on the 7th.